Board of Education will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Brings us down to our item, Special Recognitions and Presentations. Item A is a scratch for this evening, so brings us down to Item B. Brian Payne with Clarksburg Lions Club.
I think, do you have others with you?
Actually, I do have other members here. I want to, Aaron Doos, those there. Just one clarification on there. Does it say Clarksburg Lions Club?
It says.
Clarksburg Lions.
Yeah, actually, Clarksburg is another club. Our club.
Main Street.
It's Main Street Harrison Lions Club.
Main Street Harrison.
And then there was also.
Hope, Hope Lions.
Hope Lions Club, and then the Clarksburg Columbian Club also. So.
I've got Nutterport Lions.
Nutterport Lions.
And then Nutterport Lions Club. Nutterport's back there, those two gentlemen back there. And.
The Columbian Club was, was that Mike?
Yeah, Mike.
Yeah, he asked to be on the next one.
Okay, good deal.
All right.
All right, Dan.
Would you like to say anything?
Well, I can. Basically, what Main Street Harrison Lions Club does is, a couple of years ago, back in 2018, another club had, for lack of a better term, defunct and was no longer in service, internationally contacted us and said that they were wanting a focused Lions Club and that something they were starting to do. With that being said, I was a member of the Nutterport Club. My wife and I had moved to Clarksburg. And one thing led to another, working with Dr. Mark Manchin, who was here previously, we came up with what was, back then, called the Backpack Program. Take-home evening bag, or whatever the different terminology we use. So, that became our focus. And our club regularly brings in about 200 bags per month since our inception in the fall of 2018. I've got Andrew Weaver back there. Coming up, Brian Irwin, Jeff Thompson, and my wife, Annette Payne, also. That is who is from the Main Street Harrison Lions Club. And we have Mr. Vanoy back there from Nutterport. And I'm not familiar with you, sir, I can't see you.
John O'Leary.
All right. That's a synopsis of what we do, and I think it's been well received, Lori.
Well, we have certificates for, to recognize the Lions, so if you guys would come up, we have several here. And I just want to say, just coming from an elementary school, I'm not sure how it affects the other schools, but the Backpack Program were, they were a huge part of what we did every week with our kids, and there is a huge need for that. So, for these groups to come together to support the Backpack Program is a, is a great blessing for the kids in Harrison County, because they do need what you're doing. And we do appreciate all that you're doing for the Backpack Program. And I know that you worked some with, I think you worked, maybe with Chris Dorico? Before it was David C.
Yeah, David C.
David C helped organize that.
Geisel Hart was the interim. And then I, now, David's bad.
Yeah, we.
He's still Rico's back.
Mr. Dorico's back there, so he's working with these folks to help with the Backpack Program. And there is a huge need, and we sure appreciate everything that you're doing. And then we have certificates. This one is for the Main Street Lions Club, and it's a certificate of appreciation from the Harrison County Board of Education to the Main Street Harrison Lions Club for their contribution to the Harrison County Schools Backpack Program. And it's dated with May the 10th, 2021. And of course, our board members represented, Mr. Gary Hamrick, Mr. Frank Duvano, Mr. Michael Darty, Ms. Kristen Messenger, Mr. Douglas Hoag, and my name's on there. So, here's the one from the Main Street Lions Club. And then we have the same for the Hope Lions Club for their contributions to the Harrison County Schools Backpack Program.
Thank you.
I'm Hope, yes.
I didn't.
There you go. Thank you. And then we have the Nutterport Lions Club, but I would assume that's you, it's on your chart.
That's us.
Yes. And it's the same, Harrison County Board of Education will recognize the Nutterport Lions Club for their contributions to Harrison County School Backpack Program. So, we appreciate it. Let's give them a hand. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Can I press something?
Sure, you're welcome to speak.
Everybody, we're having our second annual hot dog sale this Saturday. We appreciate if anybody stopped by and says.
Where's that located?
At the Nutterport Great School parking lot.
Okay. Hot dogs. They're always great. Okay, thank you. Hot dogs are always great.
Thank you. Speaking of hot dogs. Brings us to Item C, here is the School Lunch Hero Day.
I guess we'll bring Mr. Dorico up.
We have a proclamation.
Do you?
I gotta put my glasses on.
Okay.
I love these proclamations. Whereas we honor the commitment Harrison County school cooks make on a daily basis to assure our students have healthy and nutritious food, to help prepare them to become successful and productive citizens. And whereas, School Lunch Hero Day is an opportunity to celebrate our cooks' critical role in molding our children's future and the future of our community, state, and country. And whereas, Harrison County school cooks will prepare over 1 million meals this school year and provide students with the nutrition necessary to meet high standards of performance to become lifelong leaders. And whereas, our cooks support our students and schools by providing healthy food, friendly service, and enable students to attain their full academic, artistic, social, and athletic potential. And whereas, the devotion and skill of our cooks is essential to making Harrison County schools strong and effective. And whereas, our exceptional school cooks make a lasting impact on our students' lives. And whereas, we recognize current and former Harrison County cooks who have touched and enriched our former and current students' lives in our community. Therefore, be it resolved, we, the Board of Education of Harrison County, do hereby proclaim Friday, May 7th, 2021 as School Lunch Hero. Further, be it resolved that the Harrison County Board of Education strongly encourages all members of our community to join with it in personally expressing appreciation to our cooks for their hard work and outstanding cuisine. So, we'll present that to Mr. Dorico.
Thank you.
We really can't say enough about our cook, you know?
Well, with the past year, we've talked about it before, but I greatly appreciate the work they've done, trying to navigate sometimes very many unknowns and so forth. And to be honest with you, there still may be some unknowns. But they've stepped up to the plate, so to speak, and I think it's went very well, and I'm very glad to be here working with them, so.
We're very glad that you're going where you're going.
People complained about us during the pandemic and everyone, but I never heard anyone complain about the food.
Once again, they've done a tremendous job, and I continue to move forward with changes, and I've been real pleased, so.
Thanks.
A lot of flexibility.
Correct.
Thank you.
That brings us down to Item D, which is School Nurse Appreciation Day. Another group.
Oh, we have a group full of nurses, right? Before I even read this, you could come up. We can't say enough, can we?
No, we can't. Before she talks and gives her proclamation, I'll take this off. I wanted to talk a minute, because our school nurses this year have went above and beyond, so I want to say a few words. So, when you think about school nurses, the image that comes to mind might be someone giving out Band-Aids and mandatory medication or ice packs, or helping to stop a bloody nose. But the pandemic put our school nurses on the front lines. Change has been our only constant this school year, since the pandemic began. But our nurses have risen to the challenge. This pandemic, it turns out, has highlighted the important and complex jobs that school nurses do, and shows their ability to adapt in order to safely care for their students. School nurses all across West Virginia have taken on unprecedented responsibilities, including contact tracing, COVID testing, COVID vaccines, and symptom screening. The nurses' role in this pandemic has also included planning out just logistics of the school-based vaccine sites, immunizing staff and family members of staff. At last count, we had given out over 2,600 vaccines, which is a huge accomplishment in itself. In addition to those COVID vaccines, school nurses' jobs have dramatically shifted in the past year when we're screening for students who potentially have COVID symptoms, and ensuring that our pre-pandemic duties, like giving out meds, taking care of our diabetics, they still happen safely. When a staff member or student feels ill, they come down to the school nurses, and before the vaccine, those school nurses were literally risking their lives to take care of them. Our school nurses have also been contact tracing positive student and staff cases for the Health Department, and quarantining students or classrooms when necessary since last fall. The contact tracing alone has been a huge job, and we've been under intense scrutiny, as you guys all have heard, because you've gotten angry phone calls, and can consume the nurses' whole day, whole evening, and whole weekend. My RNs went months without a day or night off. And all of our RNs and LPNs have displayed incredible bravery and dedication, and we are blessed to have them as part of our health service team. This week puts a spotlight on the school nurses and the vital role they play, but we want to say thank you to them and let them know how much they're appreciated.
I just want to take a minute before, we have a proclamation for the nurses as well, but to recognize your coordinator and the leader of the nurses. She definitely, just like all of you here, you guys lay above and beyond, and I know the hours that you've put in, and I also appreciate the coordination with our local Health Department. We've had RNs working with our Health Department hand in hand, and it has been the challenge all this year, and you guys have really stepped up and, under the leadership of Jody Sperry, I just appreciate it, and you've led this county through some difficult times being our nurses, so appreciate that. So, if you'll come up.
Yeah, come on, all the nurses in the house. Why don't we all just get up here? We have a whole house. Gary.
All right. Nice looking group of ladies. Where, where?
The mascot. You're the middle.
Why don't we all be in the middle?
You're in the middle. You're in the middle.
Okay, our proclamation, whereas our children are our future, and by investing in them today, we are securing our business, community, and state leaders of tomorrow; and whereas the physical, mental, and emotional well-being of our children is paramount to their growth and development. And whereas, West Virginia's school nurses are dedicated healthcare professionals who work in collaboration with families, schools, and communities to develop and promote comprehensive healthcare programs for our youth. And I just want to say, I think that's a piece that we don't think about how much they work with our communities, and they work with our families, because I've witnessed it in my own years of being an administrator. Whereas, in addition to providing for students' immediate health needs, school nurses continually promote healthy lifestyles and provide health and safety education to students and staff. And whereas, West Virginians are encouraged to promote the good health of our students and recognize school nurses for their contributions to the health of our children. And now therefore, be it resolved, that the Harrison County Board of Education proclaimed May the 12th, 2021, School Nurse Appreciation Day. Be it further resolved that the Harrison County Board of Education strongly encourages all members of our community to join with it in personally expressing appreciation to our nurses for their dedication and devotion to their work. Passed by the Harrison County Board of Education, Clarksburg, West Virginia, December 12th, 2021. So, proclamation and happy school nurses day.
Thank you.
All right, everyone look up for one. You want to? Yep.
And I find myself smiling behind my back. Sorry, I think that's funny.
Wait a second. So, on behalf of all the nursing crew.
Yeah.
Our fearless leader.
Your fearless leader?
Yes. She's gone above and beyond.
Well, when she comes down the hallway now, we were like thwarting another. I'm the Grim Reaper. I'm tempted to wear a Grim Reaper outfit.
So, she has had our back for everything. God bless you.
Our proclamation. All right, guys, I've got little gifts for you, so we can get off here.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Carol. I'm the Mary. Open door, if you have anything. I will give it to you. Wrong, no. I see one. All right. We're gonna walk you up.
Don't throw it everywhere.
I think we should make it up.
Ready? Next up, we have Teacher Appreciation Week.
So, we have some teachers here, so that's great. This is a proclamation for Teacher Appreciation Week. Of course, a lot of the schools celebrated it last week, and it's, I don't know that there's enough words to really say, just like with our nurses, what our teachers and staff have done to get us to this point. We still have a few weeks left, and got a lot of things going on, but we can't begin to say enough. So, any teachers out there, or anybody here listening, please note that we appreciate everything that you've done, your flexibility, and your hard work this year. Our proclamation for Teacher Appreciation Week. Whereas, a strong and effective system of free public education for all children is essential to our democratic system of government; and whereas, teachers, through their daily contact with children of diverse backgrounds, provide a critical link for the children's future success. And whereas, teachers spend countless hours, we could have said that about the nurses, preparing lessons, evaluating progress, counseling, and coaching students in performing community service. And whereas, teachers mold future citizens through guidance and education; and whereas, the future economic and societal success of our community and the world is dependent upon providing a quality education to all students. And now therefore, be it resolved, that the Harrison County Board of Education proclaimed May 3rd through the 7th, 2021, Teacher Appreciation. Be it further resolved that the Harrison County Board of Education strongly encourages all members of our community to join with it in personally expressing appreciation to our teachers for their dedication and devotion to their work. Passed by the Harrison County Board of Education, Clarksburg, West Virginia, this 10th day of May, 2021. And we have all of our esteemed board members listed on the proclamation, so much appreciation. Here, would you like to say something? I think the teachers out. Ryan, would you like to say something on behalf of the teachers?
Sure. It's, it's been a very challenging year for all of us, and I'm sure that, like everyone else, we're excited about summer break. But that also means that we won't see our kids for the next few months, or in the case of high school seniors, we won't see them as our students again, and it's a very, it's a very sad time. But it's been a great year, and hopefully, 2021, 2022 will be a more normal school year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Well, with that, that brings us up to the next item, which is Ryan Deems from the Harrison County Education Association with their scholarship awards.
You know, over the past 14 months, I have spent a lot of time in this building, and most of it has not been good. It's been contentious, and we've had complaints and concerns that I've been here to represent our members. But tonight is a good visit, because we get to celebrate two of our brightest and best scholars who are going to soon be graduates of Harrison County schools. Every year, the Harrison County Education Association runs a scholarship contest. It is open to graduating seniors whose parents are HCA members, and who are going to be attending a four-year institution come of the fall. And the scholarship program, or the scholarship contest, is made up of an essay contest, and then personal recommendations from teachers. And I'm proud to announce we have two great winners, who each will receive $1,000 tonight. Our first winner is Rebecca Williams of RCB. And our second winner is Molly Runner from Bridgeport High School. And that, that is not in a specific order. It wasn't a first place, second place. It was just the order the checks were in, so I opened them. Congratulations. Mrs. Studdler, Superintendent Studdler.
You're Rebecca?
Yes. What are you gonna do?
I'm gonna study forensic science at WVU.
Wow, very nice. Molly, I know. Where are you gonna go for college?
I'm going to WVU for nonprofit organizational leadership.
Very nice, and trust me, every little, I mean, every dollar counts.
Yes.
Doesn't not.
Absolutely.
Mom and Dad, doesn't every dollar count, right? Keep the checks, don't give it to them.
Yes. And then can we get their parents to come up and get the check to you?
Molly, mom and dad are in police here, and you work, where are you, Wilson? Wilson, my guest. I wonder if they're in here.
Yeah, we should say that, you know, we've been recognizing all the, you know, our nurses and our teachers and our cooks, and every, every staff member, if you think about it, in Harrison County, and this is the result we get. We hope that, you know, our kids, that's what we do it for, is so we can get our kids to this level and move you on to bigger and brighter things, so. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that concludes our special recognitions and presentations for the evening. It goes down to delegations. Do we have any delegations? No delegations? Superintendent's update, Ms. Studdler.
Yeah, we just have a couple of things to update you on. Mr. President, we have, we want to give you an update on the summer academy numbers, and we are still posting for a few positions, but the enrollment is increasing, and then we did send out in paper copy, flyer on the front, and in the back was a paper registration. So, hopefully, that's bringing in even additional numbers for our summer program.
We have 540 online registrations at this point. We have about 600 paper registrations. Some of those are duplicates, since we're merging those. Those who have registered will get a confirmation postcard that says we received their registration and have them registered for our program. We have about 17 teaching positions and about 10 service personnel positions that we're still looking for for this program. I know Mr. Lopez was working on the routes and getting the bus route information out so that we can provide transportation. Mr. Dorico has been working on the meal schedule. Can't say enough about Mr. Book and the recreational opportunities that he's going to be providing. That is going to be huge, those daily recreation opportunities for our students. So, we are targeting English Language Arts and Math, and we think we're a good program.
And they're still having a hard time trying to fill positions at the Parks and Rec.
Yeah, we were going to say, he reached out to us and asked us to kind of put a feeler out for him for his Parks and Rec program, so. And I believe he hires folks under, like, a work permit, right?
These are, the ones he needs are still the.
The mentor? Oh, okay.
For, for the energy.
The mentor. But we're gonna try to.
You get 1,500, and then at the conclusion, you get another 1,500.
We're gonna try to help him advertise, since he's working with us so well.
Yeah. Yeah, we posted out last year for the college students, to help them out for those positions. So, yeah, we can't say enough about what he's doing with the program.
The other update we have is for facilities. We've got a lot of things going on at Law's Creek.
Yes, as of April 25th, the substantial completion was at about 70%. So, we're moving along. A lot of that will finish up quickly. Currently, what they're working on is a lot of the HVAC work, finishing up a lot of electric, a lot of finishing. The roof group wants to tighten into the roof for the HVAC work, and also the elevator work over in high school. So, it's actually going well. They've had a little weather related issues last week, but overall, it's going well, the project. We are in the process of phasing in some of the work with the Gore Project, and it's going fairly smooth. We have a meeting next Wednesday with the architect and the construction manager and the general contractor. So, mainly those two projects, things seem to be going very, very smoothly.
And this acquisition of land that we have on here should help.
Significantly, it's going to help that project.
I think in your packets, there's a list of, an updated list of the costs where we're at for Law's Creek as well. Like, you know, occasionally, we get a call from, and it's tough when you're a staff member or an employee working in these buildings, so they've been very flexible and adapted to a lot of changes while construction's going on. And occasionally, we get a call where there's a smell or something going on in the building. And I just want to say thanks to Jimmy and Joe for, I mean, they go over and take care of it, and meet with the staff, and try to take care of this quickly. But there's always going to be those kinds of things, and any kind of new construction will be facing that, I'm sure, with the Gore project as well. So, but I just want to thank, thank the staff for being flexible, and our maintenance department for taking care of those issues as they arise. I think that's all we have for the updates, superintendent's updates.
Okay. List down to approval, consent items, is there a motion?
So moved.
They're seconded. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Brings us down to new business, approval of Bridgeport High Press Box and Weight Room Projects. I believe there's a, there's a bid tabulation, Amy. You need to add anything to this?
I'm here to answer questions, if you have any.
Are you gonna do both projects at the same time?
Say it again.
Are you gonna do both projects, the Press Box?
Yeah, we, yeah, we want to do both at the same time.
Same time.
Yeah, we're going for the big ask, and that, I think it helps us with fundraising as well. I mean, the Press Box, they're both needed. The press box is in disrepair. I'd love for you to take you up on the top and walk on the spongy roof. It's a thrill for some of our visiting coaches especially. It has to be replaced. If you were to go in, you would see that's obvious. The weight room, we were busting at the seams there. We have more kids than we have space. It's a project that will benefit multiple sports. It's not, people think just football, it's not just football, that utilizes it. I saw our soccer kids in there last week. We can benefit from the space, and, you know, for me, I think it's, we have programs that deserve it, that have earned it, and they're going to utilize it, and they'll make good use of it. But yeah, definitely both projects, same time.
Could be ready for this.
If they can get the materials, we need to get materials ordered. I think we all know that that's an issue all over the country, and cost, I think probably, Craig, you may attest to this, I think the cost probably is six figures more now than what it would have been probably over a year ago.
It is definitely significantly higher than what we had estimated when this project began. We were pretty confident that we would get a number of bidders. I think the schedule scared some people away, but we still had three bids, and they were all relatively close. I think from a material standpoint, we have, the contractors, City Construction, it's so awarded tonight, they've kind of bet on the come a little bit and started maybe ordering some materials to try to get ahead of this. Things that are causing issues of late, any styrofoam-based products, roof insulation, weird stuff like that, with the garage doors that we have in there may end up being a little bit of a delayed item, but we'll work with City and with Mac to pick them up with a solution to solve that so that those air tighten, so. But I know that if approved, we'll have a pre-construction right away, so the materials can all officially be released, and then they'll be ready to start the day after graduation.
Yeah, I'd just like to say, we, more than half of our students are extracurriculars, and I'm just speaking for the high school. Promotes physical well-being, mental well-being, probably more important. I think this is a valuable project. It's a costly one, but I think it's due. This is a generational project. It's been a long time since there's been improvements to that facility. It's needed, we'll make good use of it, I don't know.
How close are you to fundraising?
Well, I spoke with Bo Henderson, and we looked, we're close. So close that there is a rubberized floor in the weight room. You're talking a lot of weight being dropped at times, you can't just do that on concrete. You have a specialized floor that's tough enough to handle the stress. It is expensive. We can have everything structurally built and not have that and work toward fundraising for it. If we remove that right now, then July 1st, with the $60,000 facility money, we have enough. I expect us to have that floor taken care of as well by then. But we have enough right now, and I brought, just pulling out of money that we've earmarked and we've saved through various things we've done for, in some cases, 15 years, and beyond that, because in some cases, before I got there. Right now, the amount, including the board's $150,000, including our current facility money, our BHS All Sports Boosters is donating $35,000 to it. The middle school is pitching in and helping. Right now, we have roughly, not roughly, we have $526,745, and that includes one person who has agreed to donate $10,000. I don't have that in hand, but I got the $516,745. So if you bring down the cost of the rubber flooring, total project was $613,000, bring down the cost of the total flooring, it's $573,000 of the rubber flooring. Add the $60,000 to the $526,000, and we're at $576,000. We've got it covered.
Since the parent bidder is the employer of my son, even though not in a management position in any way, I'll refuse myself, let Mr. DeVano, Mr. Oliveria add something to ask.
While you're at it, let's make sure we have internet access in that, at that facility. Hardwired if possible, Todd knows what he's doing when I say what I think.
You're absolutely right, appreciate you mentioning that, and I've already spoken with Todd, and yes, you're 100% right.
All right, so, no, well, he's accusing himself. I made the motion to accept the bid. Ms. Messenger secures the motion. Is there any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, thank you very much. We still have more fundraising, we've got to put the weights in there, but we're going to get there, I guarantee it, I promise you. Appreciate you, thank you.
Brings us down to I to B on new business. It's Harrison County Schools' acquisition of parcel. I believe in your package, you'll see the actual copy of the contract for that. This is parcel of land that we spoke about.
I may consider that to be accepted.
And this, it's been moved and seconded, under discussion. This is the parcel of land across from South Harrison High School, which was formerly or currently, I guess, the doctor's office, even though nobody is in there, and this will allow us to move the buses across the road and frees up the space where the buses currently are for parking and also potential playground.
Yeah, brief things.
Much needed, much needed.
And I think the fact that it came on the market when it did, and the price that it did, it's a no-brainer.
So I appreciate you guys for the work.
Is it also going to be used as a staking area?
Yes.
Yeah, we're going to be able to, yeah, that is a bit, we're going to be able to get some preliminary work completed to parking that will be used for the bus lot, working along with the man, and they're a great partner with Harrison County Schools. They're doing some projects in here. They're doing a project, they're going to use that as staking, and they're going to clear and add a lot of ground, thanks to their.
And have you, well, wait until we do this till again. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And just off the, as I bring it up, I didn't want to bring in that motion, have you driven by the previous bus terminal at Lincoln? Oh, yeah, you looked at it, it's very, I have pictures from that side, so it's now houses the sheriff's department outpost there, so we have a police presence on, at Lincoln High School 24/7. And they really painted the building, it looks good.
It does.
I haven't seen the inside, the outside. Yeah, it looks good. So that was a win-win for us, too. We have someone in that building on the campus, in a building that we were just using for storage.
Yes.
Okay, nothing under old business, no policy updates. Brings down to personnel matters. There's personnel matters on there, and there's also the agenda, addendum, which is in your packet.
I make a motion that we approve the personnel agenda.
Doug probably has a.
I have to recuse myself, one, my niece is on the agenda, and my nephew who's transferring from Robertsonburg to Liberty, I need to recuse myself for those two.
I'll make a motion to approve the personnel agenda with personnel agenda addendums in regard with Mr. Ho's recusings. Is there a second?
I have a second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? And a few, a real, I guess, a real question here, there is the, there are some job descriptions on there, one is the director of maintenance. When do we anticipate posting that?
That will post on, well, Wednesday night at midnight.
Okay, so it'll post this.
And then the coordinator of maintenance, which was Roger's job, will also post. There's minor revisions to those job descriptions after Mr. Lopez and Mr. Evans looked at those.
Who is that, the second job, is that Roger?
Roger.
So those will post this week, and that's what I hope, I didn't want to really drag your feet on it, we need to get someone in there, a good person in there as soon as possible. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Brings down to board member comments. Mr. Dodgery?
Aye, thank you guys.
Ms. Messenger?
Not really anything, I'm just really, I'm more than thrilled about how big your pitch back into the school. I will make the announcement for the graduation later on.
It actually went out on the news, I believe, and then I believe the newspaper picked that up as well, and Mr. Oliveria knew about it, so.
The biggest thing is ICS moving towards being normal again, and it's just really a great feeling.
I agree.
Mr. Ho?
No comment.
Mr. DeVano?
No, I have no comments, thank you.
And my only comment is, I guess we hope for good weather, and I enjoy outdoor graduations anyway, I think if possible, that's really a preferable manner than being inside anyway, so hopefully it doesn't rain and we can pull all of these off, so. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. Move to second, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Join in a piece, go in with these.
Do it again next week.
RCB purchased umbrellas for all the.